Yes, sir.
Okay, looking at the table, I noticed the presence of a form, so I'd like to call a meeting to order. With that said, you can represent justice to lead us in application.
Let's pray. Amen, Father, morning in Jesus' name, once again this day, we are thankful to you, Lord, for the day that you have given us, Lord. And God, we do look to you and ask for your help and help us, Lord, to take care of the business here this evening in a way that is right and pleasing to you. And I pray that God accept them by the people in the town, Lord. Do help us, God, to do the best we can, to do the best we can for everybody concerned, God, and we might fail to give you the praise, you the honor, and you the glory in Jesus' only name.
Thank you, sir. All things with the Lord.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have before us either an electronic form or paper minutes of the previous meeting, and I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented or to make changes as need.
One second.
Second.
Okay, is any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, minutes are approved. Next item on our list is citizens' time. We've got all kinds of folks in the gallery tonight, so I'd like to ask someone to volunteer to be in. Come to, go ahead, you come on to just to the mic. The mic is not necessarily for to increase the sound, but it makes it easier for her to...
Is it on?
It's not picking up, it's, don't worry about the mic, it doesn't matter, Jason.
Can I see the light?
It doesn't work.
It doesn't matter, she's about to introduce herself and, boy.
Yes, good evening, everyone, my name is Marcy Zahn. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Rural Retreat Town Council. And like I said, my name is Marcy Zahn, and I live at 415 North Main Street. I live in a two-story house, it's directly across from Harco's Hardware. And like I said, this is my first time ever attending any town council, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I moved here from North Carolina three years ago this month, and I love rural retreat, the small-town community enchantment has to offer, not to mention these beautiful mountains in cool summers. Tonight, I come before you with a concern that I have regarding the excessive speeding that I notice on Main Street. If you're coming from food country, starting at the Citco Gas Station towards my house, the speed limit is thirty-five. So my house is on a downhill slope, no matter which direction that you're coming from, and your everyday traffic and cars are just speeding constantly. For me personally lately, it's become a challenge to even back in and out of my driveway. I'm fearful that I might get hit and rear-ended, and sometimes some motorists, they seem to get annoyed with me that they have to put on brakes, so they slow down long enough for me to turn in my own driveway. And here's where the concern really comes on a different level, not only for myself, but for others as well. The eighteen-wheelers, the log trucks, and the trucks carrying the mulch chips. I'm unsure if these trucks are cutting through this area because they found a shortcut to their destination, or if they're just on their normal delivery route, I don't know, they're going so fast, I can't, I don't even know the name. I try to see the name so I can call and report it, but I can't even see the name. Those huge trucks, they just don't have the stopping capacity as smaller vehicles. I called to the town office, I think, last week when I saw an eighteen-wheeler going by, and I had thought of this Amish horse buggy that I saw too recently going up to the store, and so thank you to the town, whoever posted that. I think that was good to get out, to tell people that that mode of transportation is in this area, and hopefully VDOT would put up some signs too for the truckers that don't have Facebook for this area, hopefully that they'll know to slow down, because that would just be awful. I have a concern for the farm equipment, the tractors, there's a daily school bus stop next to me. I see our high school students, they exercise and run in groups, they're on the sidewalk, but sometimes they spread out into the bike lane running in groups. There's a handicapped individual on electric scooter with her dog in the bike lane sometimes, and then not to mention the bicyclists that come to enjoy the beauty of the area. And so, like I said, I just cringe to think about the unthinkable. And Chief of Police, they said, is not here this evening, so I guess I'll email him a copy of this for his file or to call, speak to him personally. But leaving the Dutch pantry as you start to climb the hill, there's a sign that says Virginia Byway. And I looked that up today just to see, you know, what is that about? And it said for that, to be included in that program, this area must possess a highly aesthetic or cultural value. It must also lead to or be within areas of historical, natural, or recreational significance. I sure would like Main Street and the Town Rural Retreat to stay that way and not become a scenic highway. As our town continues to grow and offer more events and amenities and attractions, I think everyone agrees, safety is of the utmost importance. And in closing, if I'm allowed, I'm happy for that mobile electronic flashing sign, if they want to put it in front of my house. If that's allowed, I'm happy for that to be there to remind people to obey the speed limit, it's thirty-five. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to me and have the opportunity to share my concerns with y'all.
When is your address?
415 North Main Street.
And what's your work schedule?
I work from home, I am blessed to work from home, so I am home all day, so perhaps that's why I do, I notice that. And I, it is a concern, and I've seen it for a while, and I just haven't, like I said, I, when I saw these log trucks, and they're just, and then I thought to the Amish buggy, and I see the children with the bonnets on, I just had this, and I called to the office because I didn't know what else to do, that truck was, that brake thing was going, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. I mean, I don't know, he wasn't going thirty-five. Yeah, so, he was not going thirty-five, and they can't stop, and I just, there's crosswalks also, I don't know how many there are, from the bank, probably to the funeral home. You just, as more people come in, I just, the cars one thing, okay, but the eighteen, the trucks, and I don't know if they're coming through here, or if that's their regular schedule, but thirty-five is the speed limit. Then it turns to twenty-five, I went on Google Maps and I looked to see what it was, to see when it opened up to where they thought they could just through here, and it's, starting at food country, I think that's where it switched it. So from Dutch pantry to food country, it's forty-five, but then when you get to the pizza place, that's where. And there's even a sign warning you at food country that says thirty-five ahead, and it's orange. I think the signs are there, people are just in a hurry and not obeying the law, and they need to slow down. I don't want somebody to get hurt, and it just doesn't need to turn into a highway.
The reason why I ask you that is I'll have Derek come visit you.
Okay, okay.
The sign is, you put it at the cabinet shop quite a bit.
Yes.
But I will tell you another thing, we have got in touch with VDOT, and we're going to be getting some horse and buggy signs to put throughout town. Just because we do have an Amish community that's coming here now. And it's been brought before this council, you know, at least two or three times here lately. I think Ms. Dunford has brought it, because Chinkypin, they come down Chinkypin. I will tell you that Derek, he's not here to report on it, but he did go meet with one of the Amish men. And they were having, want to sit down and have a discussion and get back with Derek about some possible routes that they're going to stick to, and we'll make sure that we can get the appropriate signage up. And then, you know, we can have him actually keep an eye on those truckers.
Yes, definitely.
But I think it'd be better if he came by and put a face with a name and talk to him.
We talked, I've talked, well, actually, my son talked to him, because some people came to our house selling meat or something. And they were from Tennessee or something, and I was like, I don't think that's, I don't know about that.
Call us every time.
Exactly, they were local, so yes, thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time about that. Derek, we'll see you back.
He does have the electronic sign up in Chinkypin, warning you, watch out for both.
Good, good.
Yeah.
That's, they have a right to the road. They're so, we get people writing about it, but they have a right to the road. And we don't, we don't have anything to say about them using the road. So anyway, we'll get the blue Sasquatch, you know, meeting, he's a pretty good-sized individual, but he's a real nice guy, and he'll work on that. Okay, thank you for your time. Peggy, you will say something?
Yeah, just a couple of things, I was going to talk about the traffic, but Chinkypin's worse. We're thirty-five, that curve where I live on, you can't back out of your driveway. I'd have to start packing in now to get out unless I get hit. Across the hill, climb, and it's more, they're going more than thirty-five, because I drive twenty-five, I drive thirty-five, I drive forty-five, one more forty-five. So that's just another road that needs to be done, which Jerry does come up there every once in a while and say, and gets pretty good tickets. But my main concern tonight was, Jason, there was supposed to be a bunch of little girls here after you, so I was coming with them, they just wanted to...
I know, that happens since high school.
They wanted to find out if our splash pad was still on the agenda, was it going to be built in the retreat? Or do we have to still go to Bristol and maybe Whitfield now?
It is on unfinished business, on the agenda.
It's on unfinished business? Okay.
And you do realize the first day that we're going to get you in your bikini to be...
I do, I do. It'd be long.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay.
And I wish you all sort this out again.
Well, you don't have to, here we are, there you are.
Well, I had just some thoughts on the splash pad, but I don't know when, that's just going to come up later in the agenda or...
Now would be the time.
Now would be the time, all right. Well, and I, I just wanted to, I'm Mary Fiscus, I'm a teacher at the elementary school. All my kids are older, but I've been heavily involved with kids in the community. I want to just make some thoughts to bring to mind, as you consider this. A large amount of our population of kids are in the low economic status in rural retreats. And so that means there are opportunities to go and do things that cost a lot of money, hinders what their families can do. And we can hear that when they come in and they talk about the weekend and what they did, you can tell, you know, by what each family says, what they've been able to afford to do. So having something that's at their access is really important. The other thing is that we have a large majority of our students that are being raised by grandparents, and getting out and doing things is harder the second time around when you're two generations older than you're the ones that you're raising. And being thoughtful of that, having something right in your town that's very accessible is major to our grandparents that are raising their grandchildren. And the other thing I want you to think about is that we have generations of children that are not outside playing. That is not like when you grew up. They are inside, they're attached to electronics, half of them don't want to go outside. They're not going out and finding their own things to do anymore. But something that is a modern playground or a splash pad, now that's something totally different. And that's enticing, and it's also easy for parents and grandparents to take them there and keep them active and engaged, and not just inside with their electronics and watching television. So those are some of my thoughts, those are things that may have made playgrounds less important years in the past, but are definitely more relevant today.
Thank you, Mary. Okay. Mike, you got anything to add, Robert's acquittal, we'll not include you. Okay. We'll wrap up citizens' time, thank everybody for speaking. There's one rule. If you want to stay and listen to the meeting, you're welcome, if you want to go on, you can do that too. And in other words, nobody criticize, well, I was telling my relatives, was glad to have. So with that understood, if you want to go on, watch TV, you can do that too.
Thanks, Lee.
You just, you could decide to come to the next, because that was... Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Hold on there, Sean, you still with us?
I sure am.
Okay, just make it sure.
Can you hear everything okay?
I can hear everything really well, guys, it's sounding really good. Y'all probably don't hear it, but I can hear y'all really good.
All right.
Okay. Do we have correspondence from the town office?
We do not.
Do we have correspondence from the town council? Boy, about that. Okay. We have a handout from the police chief. I don't know, Jason, but you can answer any questions that might have about it.
Fifteen incidents, two suspicious vehicles or persons, one large new, which is with a nursing home, one child abuse, one resident alarm, and he patrolled one thousand and ten miles for the month.
Okay. As he's not here, can't ask questions, so anybody have any comments? And if you can make, if not, we're on unfinished business. First thing on the agenda is splash pad, unfinished business.
It's actually downtown, can I talk about my downtown revitalization?
Yeah, sit down, down in the...
Since everybody went down there earlier, I'm assuming everybody has seen the fence that has been installed at the site. As of now, it's complete, and the rest of the invoice is in the next pay run. I think it looks really good, high quality. I did go speak with the individual that we talked about sharing half of part of the fence with, explained to him that it was a lower cost, and he declined.
He declined anyway?
He declined anyway, yes. But I did have that conversation. The next step is getting the grade work completed for the farmer's market parking lot, as well as the other parking areas. And I want to give Mike a whole lot of credit, because he's done a lot of groundwork for everybody. He met with the county about the erosion and settlement control on the site during the grading process. From talking to Mike and his discussion with the building inspector, the town should have a permit in the near future, we expected it either yesterday or today. I would also like to say that a separate contractor has looked at the building on the downtown site to give the town a quote for redoing the bathrooms and some of the other work on the building down there. So at that point, we'll have two cost estimates. But Mike has been running his little hind end off, staking all that out, meeting with the building inspector. Is anything that you want to add?
I met Johnny Kinsler, he's the erosion control for the county, and he was very pleased with the site down there. And like Jason said, we can get the permit just as soon as the contractor gets his paperwork in to him, there it is, sign off on it.
So it's imperative that we start now on the farmer's market, right?
We need to get...
Do we need to okay something? Because that work needs to be done quickly, because it's farmer's market time soon.
We need to get, we need to go ahead and get at least the gravel. And I would recommend anybody that wants to see it, what we're wanting to do is kind of what Dale Steffi did across from his shop over at Southwestern Equipment. They went in, they put down, you can, you explain it better to me, Mike, go ahead.
They went in, they took the soap sole down, they put in a matting, then they put the stone on top of it, they rolled it in, and it's just about a lot of concrete, it's ready, that would be ready for paving if he was going to pave. That will be the same thing done down there.
So we need to do the grade work for the parking areas and kind of the parking area and the roundabout at the farmer's market. And then they'll grade the fence, up to the fence, because I don't know if you noticed, but there's some places where the concrete, we'll grade that up and fix that up to where, you know, it's on, it's on grade.
And we got a contractor lined up to do that?
We do.
I think we should look in it, Dan.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that they do the grade work and get the site prepped soon, now.
I second.
Now you can discuss it.
Another thing that I do want to add to that is we can use this additional site, or site development. Some of that money is refundable through the grant for the Withland Foundation, because we did have money left over from, and I talked to Travis Jackson. Instead of sending him the money for the farmer's market building, he wanted us to wait until we had the whole sum and send it at one time. So some of that will be sent in to be paid for by Withland Foundation.
Let's do it. Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Long as I never talked about the motion, but can I communicate with the farmer's market manager and see if there's anything that she needs? Tables, I was just thinking about that, I know, I know, I'm going to go ahead and write on the motion. Is there any way, while we're talking about the farmer's market, if there's anything she needs for us to do, or anything for us?
We've had discussions with her, we're on the same page as to what she needs.
She's going to have to have those, because the farmer's, the depot foundation provided those for the farmer's market people, some of them.
Most of them are going to have to supply their own table.
Oh, they're going to have to do that this time?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed, I'm sorry, but yes, I agree with you.
Okay. The motion, second, that we begin the site prep, give Jason, what kind of money we need, we need to have any kind of upper limit, or you have an idea how much it will cost?
I mean, that one motion, blanket motion, was to use the cigarette tax money for the downtown revitalization, correct? So I mean...
Money's there.
Money's there.
Let's go ahead and Monica, Mrs. second, vote on it, so we go right ahead, is that all right?
So the motion is to begin the grade work and get the site prepped for the parking lots at the farmer's market?
Yes.
Farmer's market, what about Bumgardner Avenue, we want that parking set up too.
Is that part of the group, that got to be included in grade?
Yes, that would have to be graded, also.
Get it all, I would recommend getting it all done at once.
All grading and site preparation that has to be done.
The one that I show you is in the red, the orange, that's the two that really need to be done.
They're in the motion. All right. Everybody got it straight? Questions now? All those in favors of starting the prep, the site prep, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, the motion carries, thank you. I have a question, when do we have to start and make a decision on the splash pad?
You've got the cost estimate?
But he's scheduled, he has to start, not going to start work until fall, correct?
My understanding, he was start site work, and it would not, the splash pad itself would not be in service until the next summer.
So we have some time?
Well, we have to get on their schedule.
Do we have to commit to him?
In order to get on their schedule, we'll have to let them know so that they plan us for fall for their preliminary work.
While we're on this, if I can, I just wanted to discuss this without a motion already, and we've already talked about it. Can I ask you a question? And what grade do you teach, I don't remember.
I'm in fourth grade.
Fourth grade, okay. Out of the kids that you have, what do you think the percentage of your kids that would come in and use this would be?
I don't know, that's hard to say. I don't know how to do that. I mean, if that's like a questionnaire you wanted to have an official count for.
No, no, I'm just curious to see what you're beating on.
But I know that, you know, the current playground, the community center is lacking. But yet, you know, my kids were young, fifteen years ago, it was used, I mean, it was being used almost every day. So, I mean, I would like to think that that would give, and when we're around kids, they'll go up, they'll ask to go up to the rural retreat playground a little bit, but that's, you know, but when we talk about birthdays, some kids that don't have a lot of money, they would go to Age of Park, because that's what, that's what they have the money, their families to do, and they just go up there and meet. It'd be really nice to have something that's in our own backyard, I think it would utilize a whole lot more, if it was right here in Dade Town.
I think we also have to look at upgrading the community center facilities to park, parade, playground down there, but...
I would think if you did this, you just went, just go away with that down there.
I don't think so, because you're going to go down there and walk, the track is down there.
She gets her clothes repaired.
It's a lot of that, but I don't...
Like even when, you know, they, sometimes they have soccer games, T-ball games, and their brothers and sisters go up there. I have set up for that to be, I'll talk about it a little while, one of the churches is doing, in early June, is doing a lot of stuff for the community, and they're going to go and do a whole lot of that, but I'll talk about that a little while.
That definitely needs to be considered for upgrading.
Jim, Sunday, there was two events, one at the B C Center, one in the show. Playground was used.
I'm not saying I want that, I'm just...
It's used, it's used every day.
More than you might imagine. So we have to look at the splash pad soon.
Soon as possible.
I think we should put that high on the agenda for a decision to be made on splash pad at our next meeting.
Can we not do that, Mike?
I think if we don't do something, whether it be splash pad, whatever, if we don't have something for our young people, youngsters to do, then I think rural retreats is...
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we perceive was the splash pad and playground up there.
Get on our schedule.
To get it on the schedule so that we can...
Begin construction when they can.
We can discuss this legally. Yeah, so I need a second.
I'll second, so we can talk about it.
And now we can talk about it.
You just, what would you do? Call them on the phone, say, put us on the schedule?
Start planning it right now.
I don't see that it needs a whole lot of talk, beat to death, and just carry on and get it done.
It's a very difficult decision for me, anyway, because I can see both sides of this, but my question is, with our population not being that big, how many people would use it?
It would be surprising.
Well, I hope so, I mean, and I'm not saying, like I said, I'm not for or against, I'm just...
I'll weigh down the road there, the way you... I am too, I think one of my major concerns is the water being used. I mean, we want to make sure that we have the, you know, water to do that without, you know, causing a problem somewhere else.
Well, one of the things about, one of the things about, go ahead, Sean, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, again, I know it's a little difficult. I think I might have to say what Monica and Derek talked about, the two alley, the initial use as far as water was pretty high, but after that it was low. I can't remember any gallons.
It was me and Derek, and it was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was a, it wasn't an amount that would actually, a daily amount that would... it, it, it was a, it wasn't an amount that would actually, on a, a daily amount that would actually hurt us, unless we were in a bind. And, and, you know, the town would have the authority to say, listen, the splash pad is down for three days because we have to do something to our water tank. I mean, you know, I, I'm right there with you with the water usage, that, but once, if we do get stally spring online, I'll feel a lot more comfortable about it.
I mean, I'm, I'm a big, I don't know, I'm not having to talk about, we talked about the debt, um, but, you know, we have earmarked the cigarette tax money for the people, for the citizens, for something to do, and, uh, I, I think it's the right thing to do, guys, I really do, I mean, uh, it's about time we did something for our citizens out there, but obviously not. We, we've got to serve our, our, our community.
Okay, that's shortening it, we, we've had discussion. I'm called for a question, and Jim, you know what you've got the right to do. If, if you.
Well, I know.
We're with you.
I voted against you before.
That's right. But I mean, I'm not giving, or taking permission either one, you know, that.
I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I still think we, we need some more citizen input on this, and I think that we should put this off until our next meeting to get some more opinion of citizens of the Town of River Creek. I, I, I question it's gonna be used maybe four months out of the year, thirty-three. Uh, and it's a quarter of a million dollar project already. I, I think we need some more citizen input on this. I, I have talked to a lot of citizens about it, and I realize that our citizenry is older. And I would, I don't know the percentage, but I would say seventy, seventy-five percent of the kids in schools up here don't live in Town of River Creek. Well, it could be just for, you know, a lot of the town, but always hit the, but it's being built by the town of the Town of River Creek, the town, that's the problem with it. Okay.
Well, I, I think, just, just, not to play devil, devil's advocate to what you just said, Bob. And I, I've talked to people, a lot of people have came up to me and asked me about it. And, you know, yes, it will be used three or four months out of the year, let's say forward the most. But what could you put down there that would be used more than four months out of the year?
You put a pickleball court, it's gonna be a passing fad.
Yeah.
And that's just gonna be a waste of space.
You think the splash pad is gonna be a splash, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, I'm sorry, but if you're looking for, if you're looking for perfect, or nothing, if, if you, nothing that we can do is gonna get one hundred percent, and the more people that you get involved in this, it, it, we're gonna kick the ball so far down the road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could speak, um, I can make that start, same argument as the farmer's market. We're only going to utilize it for three or four months, is, we have dedicated a lot of money, a lot of time for that, what is the difference in that in a use for all the citizens?
And you've been pregnant silent?
No.
Okay, uh, uh, you got two that, that are sort of riding the fence. I cannot offer anything certain, you're gonna have to hold your nose and jump in. So, I'm gonna sort of push the issue and say, we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussions, so I'm gonna call myself for the question, if I may, and the question is, we wanna get on the list, is basically what it amounts to, is that correct, Mark? Is that too?
To move forward with the splash pad, is what Dale said, he made a motion to move forward with the splash pad, but that, that can be, is that what your motion was?
Mark, you move splash pad and playground.
Okay.
Down that area.
Okay.
Okay, signing a contract with these people?
I surely am.
It's where the rubber meets the road here now. Yet, we have the money earmarked for, it will not be the only thing we've ever screwed up, that I don't know. I don't know what you're gonna do to make it certain. So, with that said, all those in favor of moving forward with the splash pad, please signify by a steady eye.
Aye.
I pose?
Aye.
Well, that, that, Sean, you're slow on that, buddy, are you eyeing for, or are you eyeing against?
I'm, I'm for, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then it appears that the council wants to move forward. So with that said.
You didn't ask if there was any opposed?
I did.
I didn't hear it, I didn't hear you say that.
I, I did, well, Sean was eyeing.
So it was, so it was six, four, and zero opposed?
That's what it appears.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just have to.
He didn't mean to do it, it's just he eyed, or not asked the question again, so let it go. Alright. So whenever, go ahead and get started, that's, that's what the council is, and, uh, in case any other business with that, it, we're gonna have plenty of time to talk about it, and we could ask for more money, or whatever we have to do. Okay, Dale, the last thing on the list, Harry's day, we'll signal you out.
Everything is coming into market with prices, so she's got all that, I just want to write the checks, so we're all banned, we're secured. And I can announce the May Act after March, after March, May first.
Okay.
So, put on the red, and then just make the posters, and then at, at first May, we'll just.
Has my.
That's my.
Very good.
Okay, we release the.
They have to.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, that's after, after May first.
It's, they, well, less, in a sense, if you're not charging. Okay, that takes us then down to the upgrades of the water plant.
Um, upgrades of the water plant, uh, I spoke with our representative from Flow Controls about the valves and actuators the town ordered in March. Uh, this is about the fifth time I've called, luckily I was able to get in touch with him. Um, the manufacturer had some parts on back order, and the new ship date is May the fourteenth. Uh, in order for us to get, um, what we need to do, to do a CIP cleaning to aid in our water production. Um, I've also talked to Mike, uh, about, uh, got in touch with the company that services our water tanks. We're gonna have to take one of them offline once we do the repairs that I just talked about. Um, we may not have to do a cleaning, a lot of times they'll, they'll come look, our water is so clean that they bypass a, a cleaning. But, not only the clean, but one of the things that is also in our contract is that they would come pressure wash our tanks. Um, I don't know if you've noticed the bottom of them.
Green.
Look, look, you know, they've gotten, gotten some green on them, but it is in, in our service contract, I'm gonna try to get them here as soon as possible. Uh, for one of those two tanks, we do have a valve issue with one of the tanks. Um, so it may be the big tank, the five hundred thousand gallon at this time, that, that gets tended to, but they will be pressure washing both of them when they do come. Uh, talked to the lane group, they're still running the numbers, they asked me to be patient with them, they are working on it, their main engineer's name's Kevin. Um, and he's looking into the numbers, and that goes into a, whether we wanna go with a new plant, or consider doing the two skids that we went and looked at in Giles County. Um, which would take care of stally, but also we could use to upgrade the Philippi plant. Um, but that's gonna be a decision once I get the numbers, I don't have the numbers to make a recommendation, um, or for the engineers to make a recommendation. Uh, but I, I am waiting on those numbers, and we can go from there. Uh, but we do have the co, the estimated cost for the building, uh, estimated cost for the pile plant, uh, on its own, new versus the two used skids, and then, uh, the piping, which piping, there's not gonna be a whole lot of, because the piping's in the ground now. We'll just have to put the plan in, we have the piping ready to go. Uh, but I am waiting on those numbers, um, and the lane group is trying to give me numbers on that. Um, let me go to sewer plant, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, we got, Logier called me last week, uh, with, I don't know, four, four letters you never wanna hear, but he said OSHA's here. So, the town had a surprise inspection from OSHA last week. Uh, and they did see some minor discrepancies at the water and sewer plants. Um, some of it had to do with confined space, uh, we do have a valve when we waste sludge that they do have to get into a vault. Uh, it's a little over three feet, three feet is the, the minimum that if you get in, you have to have confined space. Uh, talked to Donald Vault, um, and we're gonna, he's got a way, that we're gonna raise that valve up out of that, so we don't have to get in that vault, that valve in order to work it, to do what we need to do. Um, she's gonna go back to Richmond, uh, meet with her supervisor, and then they're gonna send us a written report probably in sixty days, um, as to what they found. Um, and how to fix it. Uh, I don't, I don't expect there to be any fines or anything, you know, everything seemed to be in good shape, I mean, she said it was minor concerns to her. And most of the localities that she goes to, our size, have these minor concerns that, that she see, so, you know, you never wanted to hear OSHA, but it, it, it was, it was a pleasant, uh, pleasant visit, and, you know, she found some things that we needed to do.
Is that the first time they've ever been here?
Fifteen years ago was the first time they came.
If, if they don't put a padlock on it, you did just fine.
Well, they didn't. Um, and she, and you know, she explained everything, I mean, little stuff like, uh, the, the building we have down there that's over our UV lighting system. Uh, the overhead light is like when you put in your basement, it had an extension cord plugged into it that you turn on. She said that was a no-no, so we're gonna have to get that hardwired in, which, you know, just small stuff, stuff that we can fix easily. It's not anything that's gonna cost us a tremendous amount of money, but, uh, she did find a few things, so.
So do you have to write the letter, act, or everything is?
I've actually, I've actually, she wanted to audit the subcontractor, which is Mr. Donald Vault, um, she met with him down there today. So she went over some things with him, um, and then, uh, she did send in some questions about some workers' comp policies we have, how many claims we've had in the past fifteen years. Um, which, to be honest with you, I can only think of two, so I'm gonna get her that information, I got an email from her today, so I'm gonna follow up with that. And like I said, once I get their report, they'll, they'll give us some, some options and alternatives on how we need to fix the things that she found. Um, but, but nothing, nothing is keeping me up at night right now, because there's, you know, you hear those, those four letters and you're, uh-oh, you know, but this, this smaller stuff that she says she sees in a lot of smaller localities, so. You want me to do Main Street, Main Street sidewalk prepared?
Keep going there.
Um, uh, Mike, uh, got a cost estimate, did you bring that in?
Or?
For the railing at the sidewalk, uh, the materials alone, uh, if we go with the high-grade sturdy material, is gonna be around nine thousand dollars.
You want it?
I could get it. Um, and we will be.
Okay, I could get it.
We'll be ordering that and installing it soon, um, we haven't decided how we're gonna install it, uh, whether it, it's something that our guys can do, or if we wanna, if we wanna get somebody else to price it and, and put it in. But it's, it's really, really high quality and nice ADA compliant railing. That's what it'll look like, but it'll also have, on the inside, it'll have a, a round rail that you can hold on to.
Kind of short end.
Well, not to me.
But it, it will have another additional rail that comes here, and is round, so people can hold on as they go down the stairs.
You're gonna have to adjust your client's house.
Yeah, me and Enes would have trouble with the hell that. Um, that's all I have on that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, derelict property, I, I don't have, I've been vaguely in touch with Mr. Sobe. Um, repairs to the downtown building, uh, or to town hall. Uh, did meet with the contractor today, uh, he looked at the drive-through with Mike, and the external door at the council chambers here. Um, we've already got somebody set up to do the caulking and the windows, but this individual is gonna give us a quote on, on fixing some of the structural things that Mr. Lewis had brought up at the last meeting. Um, I will tell you, he also went down to, um, the, uh, community center, and is gonna give us a quote on the things down there, it included the water damage uh, section over where you go into tables and chairs, the ceiling in the women's bathroom, the awning outside the kitchen. What am I missing, the two windows that are, that need to be replaced, am I missing anything?
At the door.
And the door. Um, he also went to, uh, the downtown building and looked to give us a quote on those, uh, ADA compliant restrooms that the, uh, the county said we needed to do, um, to, to give us another cost estimate on that. Uh, so that we will at least have two cost estimates on what it would take to do that, but he is gonna give us a quote on that as well. We threw a, a lot out of him today, so. But we, we do have somebody looking at, at all that stuff now. Um, we've ordered, we've ordered the paint for the trash receptacle down there. Um, as soon as it, as soon as it comes in, the guys are gonna get it painted, sit down there, and we'll take that old blue thing out and go from there. Um, that's all I have under unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
In case anybody have a question, do we have to do something on that nine thousand dollars for that thing?
I mean, the materials are what they are, I mean, if we're gonna.
Okay, do we have to approve that?
It's under the, it's, it's, the purchasing policy states fifteen thousand, you all have to approve it, Gina.
Good question, good answer, moving right along. Okay, any other unfinished business? Okay, under new business. You all get to hear me, do you? Now, for us to, this is a big deal. For us to discuss it, we'll need to have motion second to discuss it, if we don't get that, we don't have to discuss it. Okay, I just set the stage, I'm sorry, I don't mean to. But I have a resolution, we'll read it, and then we'll ask questions to the town managers. Whereas, an interconnection of water lines between the water systems of With County and the Town of River Creek has not previously been constructed. And whereas two water systems are within one half mile of being interconnected on Radio Drive. Whereas, an interconnection between the two counties would provide redundant water sources to With County and the Town of River Creek. Whereas, the Town of River Creek does not have a backup water source, this interconnection provides them with the ability to receive water from the Town of With and all of the New River Regional Water Authority treatment facilities. And whereas With County would be provided a backup water source from the Town of River Creek for With County West Water Systems. And whereas the Virginia Department of Health has given notice that funding is potentially available has given notice that funding is potentially available from 2025 state revolving funds supplemental appropriation for hurricanes, Helene and Milton and Hawaii wildfires. Therefore, being resolved, that the town, the River Tree Town Council hereby support With County's application for funding from the, I'm not sure, SAA, CMW funds for the construction of that connection and the, and with the town of River Tree and being further resolved that a copy of this surrender resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the River Tree Town Council and not through this 22nd of April. Some of you.
Oh, why? Can I see?
Sure.
Why do we want to get on to the water when we have two springs? We've got a well.
Three springs.
Three springs, okay. Got a well. Why would we want to get, I mean, you can't beat the, the springs, the water from springs. Why do we want to hook on to With County?
If you do that...
Do what?
If you do that, then With County's got their first hook in the town.
I agree.
Uh, we've been talking. I, I will admit that. Uh, Sean, just keep, just keep listening for a minute. There's a reason for this.
I've got one more favor.
Sure, go ahead.
What have they done since they took over River Tree Lady to make it better? So what my answer there?
Come to us and ask for one.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm answered.
Jim and I made, had this discussion earlier. I said, we have begged, pleaded, wheeled and whined for more. I wish we knew exactly the 10 years. Why do we have to do this tonight? 10 years are more.
Why do we have to do it at all? Because the grant, I can answer that question. The grant funding, um, just came up and it has to be in by May 1st. That's the reason for the, that, that's the reason for the urgency. I just wanted to answer that question.
But, but when we were wheeling and whining, we were going to pay for most of that. This durst, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that's being glazed over in this. We're being force fed something. We begged for it. And I will welcome any questions from the, the town, I mean, the county's engineer or the county administrator. What the problem is, he will not like to answer. And I don't want to burn any bridges with anybody. But what the hell? We offered to pay. And they wouldn't even talk to us. Monica, this needs to be recorded. I'm not saying something, but I want you to add it. Write it down, underwrite it and send it in. So when I send my piece, anybody have anything else to say? We're still waiting on a second.
I, I just think that, I think that's their, but somebody else said that that's their first step of us becoming, doing away with their town and then...
The demise of the town of River Tree.
Yes, yes.
Can we run out of psych up before we get forward, Mr. Mayor?
No, you ain't got no second. Ain't going no farther.
Okay, I'm sorry. My apologies.
But he can state his opinion if he likes.
Okay, I'll state my opinion, if that's all right.
Yeah, you're, you have that right.
Okay, all right. Um, and I, I know there's been bad blood before and what have you, but I mean, I don't understand what the problem is with exploring an option, but we're, we're not, we're not signing an agreement or anything. We're just looking for funding at this point. We're just going to the government and saying, hey, is there anything available for us to make this happen? If we're truly not interested, that's fine, but I mean, in my opinion, I have more options is the prudent thing to do for our citizens. We don't know when our second plant will get built. We don't know when it will be online. Um, why not explore this option? At least start this option as far as funding, especially if somebody else is going to pay for it, Mr. Mayor.
Have we not been told in the past that thorough water is no good by the time it gets here? Or am I just, I mean, is that not a fact?
I can retreat it. I can speak to that. I mean, as we know, I mean, let's, let's be honest. Uh, this agreement, if it was to go forward, if it was to go forward, if everything was upon place, th, th, this would be a worse case than here. But you think about the option of saying, we have no water as opposed to With County water? I think if you look in your heart and really talk to the citizen, if you, if you say, we have no options of water, or you know what, we had options to explore, but we decided we don't want With County's bad of water, what can you tell them?
Can I say this?
And again, again, I'm just saying, I mean, if you think about having our water for two or three days, why is it because of the system? And I mean, this is just, there may be that many forces, but I mean, why not at least explore, put out pillars to find out if we can get this funded on somebody else's dime rather than the town of River Tree?
We're not trying to get it funded. They're trying to get it funded.
Because for, for, for the land to get funded better, it's better if we have a regional outlook. The more citizens that are fighting, the better chance of us getting money for it ours.
My fear is that every time we go to something regional, With County takes the lead, River Tree falls behind, River Tree ends up getting the big auger at the end.
Here, here.
And it's just not, it, it's, it just never pans out in our favor ever.
But we're not talking about that. We're talking about just exploring this option, seeing if there's any...
This is not exploratory.
And then it's a vault plan.
This is not exploratory. This is a, this is applying for the funding to, to, believe it. It's not, it is not exploratory.
Well, it, it, it is not, not a vault, Mr. Mayor. It is not an agreement for saying, it's just an agreement to say, hey, we're looking for money. Do you guys have money?
There's not enough, uh, things, there's not enough things in there to protect us. Well, back, back to the water itself. Drive down Route 11. And down there at the last fire hydrant, this way on their water. Several times through the summer and early fall, you will see six inches of water running constantly to get rid of the nasty water. So I'm sorry. I, I, Bill.
We don't have a second.
Mr. Mayor, the motion died for lack of second.
Unless somebody pops in there.
Can I say one more thing, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be quiet and honest?
We don't have a second.
So I mean, the only thing I got to say is, is again, that's, that's the wish of the council and the people. I respect that. But I feel like we are, we are on the island. If you're commenting that the River Tree, the water system, and everything, and what kind of is that perfect, you know, it doesn't, um, then go ahead. What, you can let this run, that's fine. I don't see any problem with exploring this off.
It ain't exploratory, Sean. I don't like that. I'm sorry. I'm going to be very forward. There ain't no explorer involved in any of this.
I will, I will...
I disagree with that.
I will say this. I have my own opinion on it and I'm going to keep it to myself because I'm not the voting member. But this is to look into funding for it. There's no contract between the county and the town that we have to do it. But the infrastructure, they're looking to see if the infrastructure would be paid for with grant funding.
But this shows that we concur with them doing it.
Yes.
And I, I'm not seeing concurrence here.
If, in a water system, this came from the Virginia Department of Health, in a water system, the last entity that is taking water is responsible for the failure of disinfection byproducts or any, uh, any problems thereof falls on the last, on the end of the waterline. It makes us responsible to repair the disinfection byproducts, which we cannot do. It's nailed. That came from Virginia Department of Health. That's not Tim. That came from an engineer. He said, whatever you do, don't ever connect with that water system. Now, he's a retiree now, but that's where it came from. So I, I think we've given this a pretty good, we have to have some assurances that are not in that. One of them is, they don't control what we charge for water. And they don't, uh, they have never given us a rate. They always blame Ray Mattney. Said Ray Mattney caused the, the connection not to happen to begin with. It was not Ray Mattney. It was Tim. They were going to charge us $7, $9,000 a thousand for the first thousand gallons, and then $7,000 a thousand for the 290,000 gallons that we were going to use. And that they would only pay us $2.15 for the water. They went the other way. It was a screwed job, and this was a long time ago, and they blamed Ray Mattney, and I've told it in public and repeated it. It was me. I told them to give us a decent rate, and I've never gotten a rate. There's no rate written on this, is there?
No, sir.
Well, why would we, and why would we go to the open end, something like that?
Mayor, you don't have a second.
Why do we even want to go any further?
Well, that sounds to me like I've, I've been a lot of that, now, hey. All right, is there any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay. On the committee reports, finance and preparations, you have any opinions from the town office?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, on personnel ordinances and legal matters?
Nothing on that except for we do have our new, uh, employee. He'll be here by the next meeting.
Are we going to meet him there?
You can. I'd ask him to come and be fine.
I think we should meet him.
Okay.
It'd be nice to have him in. And he would understand he wouldn't be barred from attending. Okay, that takes us to the town manager report.
Uh, just a couple other things that I had. Um, repairs to the caboose. I'm going to completely do a 360 or 180 on what I told you before. I apologize. Uh, I spoke with E. Luke Green and a painting company out of the New River Valley. Uh, he actually recommended this individual that does these projects. Uh, the company's completed several railcar repainting projects for Norfolk and Southern and Roanoke. Um, they have the proper materials to complete the repainting properly, and it'll last for a very long time. Um, they said that the finish that they use, even Birdman over would stick to for 20 years. So, um, but this, this is where I'm going to kind of contradict myself and I apologize for that. They suggested in order to do this correctly, that they do have some confin, confining areas that they put up as shelters and they want to sandblast the caboose with either glass or walnut shell material. So he's going to meet with me Thursday to look at it. Um, he goes in between the New River Valley location and I think he's from Princeton or Bluefield area. So on his way through, he's going to come, I've already sent him pictures, but he's going to come take a look at it and give me a quote on it Thursday. Uh, going back to what, uh, we talked about earlier, I spoke with the Ignite Church, um, early June, they're going to be doing, they have a hundred and some volunteers. I don't know if you remember last year, they came through and did a lot of work, uh, but it rained a lot that day. Um, they're wanting to do quite a bit of staining. They're wanting to do a lot of work at the community center. They're wanting to replace three signs at the community center. The one in the yard, they want to completely redo that with a metal sign. Um, they're wanting to do, redo the one on the, the side of the building itself. And then they're wanting to redo the one, um, at the, on the pavilion. And then they want to go through and sand and paint all the, uh, and stain all the playground equipment there, uh, to keep kids from getting splinters and things like that. So I've already talked to him extensively about what he wants to do there. They've actually rented the community center for that day, so that will kind of be their primary location where they're, where they're going from to do this other work. Um, but they also wanted to come down and do work on the downtown lot, anything we had. Uh, but they're really, one of their main focuses is going to be on the community center and the outside appearance of it. So, uh, appreciate their help. Um, they're looking for projects to get into. Uh, and like I said, last year, he had a hundred and, I think, 111, 112 volunteers. So we will be providing the paint and stuff for them. Um, and he was going to give me a quote from Mr., uh, who's on Chestnut, worked for AUP?
Fortner.
Mr. Fortner. He does those metal signs. He did one at the elementary school. He did the one down here at Parkway about doing one of those metal signs with, with the Heritage Day, you know, not Heritage Day, community center sign. So I look forward to working with them and getting, getting that stuff done. That's all I have. Unless somebody has, has questions. Oh, I did speak with the individual on Westfield Avenue. He called me and asked for an extension so he could get a, he's wanting to get a, uh, rollback dumpster. I think the business that he was involved in, he's not involved in anymore from speaking with him, and he's wanting to get rid of a lot of stuff. So he asked me for an extension and I did grant him one, so.
Okay, anybody have a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything about the lawn, any word about, about the lawn?
No, I don't have anything to report on that. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions? Should the town act? Okay, that takes us to my...
Okay, we have a short bill run tonight. Um, AZ Office Resource, $112.26. Alpha and Omega Repair, $1,789.35. Amazon, $71.61. Atmos Energy, $462.88. BMS Direct, $500. RennTag Mid-South, $1,594.03. CND Truck and Safety Supply, $578.14. Electronic Systems, $34.69. Ferguson, $3,030.48. Hurt and Profit, $1,115. Lincoln Financial, $214.21. Chantel, $747.01. And Virginia Fence Builders, $16,900. That's a total of $27,149.66.
Hey, Sean Osslon, your name, how you spelling?
J, J.I. Hey, now, off, let's go real quick, um...
I know, off, I dropped real quick, um, I would like to nail, and I know it's not perfect, but I appreciate it, I appreciate the opportunity to still participate, I thank everybody, I really do, thank you.
We'll disconnect now, okay?
Thank you, disconnected. Still, I don't know, I didn't.
Are we, are we paying this downpour company, are they on a retainer or something?
No, they are, once, what they'll do is, they're gonna help us with the funding for that sales room project.
Yeah.
So, their fee will be added into the funding.
Okay, so it'll come out of any funding that they might be instrumental in?
We will pay them, but it's gonna come, it'll go in with the funding for the project.
I just wanted to have it. Happy trails. Trails. Happy trails to you until we meet again.
Thank you. Well, I hope you choose a key thing.
We got moved to the street just this one year. I don't know, I'll be back at their...
We're gonna hold you too, babe.
I don't know, like, 'cause they're around. They're new. They had one less teacher, they didn't have a key, they had three teachers.